I thought we had one more coming, Julie.
Okay, welcome to the December 9th, 2021, Olin Tangi School Board Meeting. Let's get the meeting starting, started by calling the roll.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mrs. Patrick.
Here.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
Mrs. Beazel.
Here.
And Dr. Weiss.
Here.
Thank you.
Let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, I hate to do this, but we have to go into executive session to discuss something. So I need a motion to go into executive session as permitted by Section 121.22G4 of the Ohio Vice Code for the purpose of preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees as permitted under Section 121.22G1 of the Ohio Vice Code to consider the employment and compensation of public employees. Do I have a motion?
Go ahead, Dan. Go ahead.
I'll second.
Thank you. All right. Call the roll, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick.
Yes.
Dr. Weiss.
Yes.
And Mrs. Beazel.
Yes, and it will not, it should not take very long, so we'll be right back. Oh, okay, all right, thank you. Thank you for holding tight with us. Okay, I, next on our agenda is, I need to approve the agenda with the amendment. We have an amendment, and I will read the amendment. The amendment is a board action item to approve a collective bargaining agreement with the Olin Tangi Teachers Association for the period of July 1st, 2021 through, or 2022, excuse me, through July 30th, 2025. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Say 2021.
It should be, it should be July 1st, 2022. Yes, I'm verbally making that correction.
Got it. Okay, so I had Mrs. Patrick as, making the motion, and Mr. King is seconding, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Are we ready for roll? There's some more discussion. Okay. Mrs. Patrick.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Dr. Weiss.
Yes.
And Mrs. Beazel.
Yes.
Thank you.
On our agenda tonight, we have a presentation from Jeff Gordon, who's going to come up and give us a permanent improvement update, and I see you've got a spreadsheet for us.
I do, I put it out while you were coming down.
Because you're, you love the spreadsheets of track.
I do. I was careful planning and on the approval.
I don't think his mic's up.
There we go, now try not to point the laser at anybody. So, same format that we've, we've used for several years, I've tried to keep it consistent. You see at the top, a couple items of note that I'll talk about is the, we've got school bus replacements on top, then the playground updates, you saw 20, from the 2020 bond, we did all of the main playgrounds last summer. We do have some funds now, we're going to move forward with the preschool playgrounds that have been at the four older elementarys, we're going to go ahead and soft surface and replace the equipment there. We had an alternate for a soft surface on those last year, but we didn't move forward with it because we didn't feel like the equipment was in good enough shape to do that, so we wanted to get through the project, see what funds we still had remaining from the playground on the bond, and then move forward. So we're going to put a new piece of equipment in and soft surface in those four playgrounds, which will be the last four to address this year. And then the other couple of items to note that we're working on already for next summer planning is the elementary and media center updates, and we're looking at making some modifications there, we're not, not putting up walls or changing the whole area, we're going to fill some pits, take down some of the walls, open up a media space at the front of the library, change the carpet out, and do some things with shelving and update the furniture. So it will look closer to a Shell Meadows than some of the old media centers that we currently, currently have, as well as then the other one that I'm really excited about are the high school collaboration spaces. So we'll start the process of doing those at a couple of the high schools, we'll do a couple next summer, and then work with the principals on which collaboration spaces we do the following, following years. So, the other items moving down through, we have our yearly technology items in the PI category down below, as well as all of our normal buckets that we, that we hit there. Not a lot has changed there. The other thing of note on the permanent improvement, if you look down at the bottom of the page, there is the gray line, and it says 500,000 under 2022, and then goes to 750 and 1 million. So when we were projecting what we thought the collections would be, working with Mrs. Hatfield, we set the number that you see under the PI projected total, and then we set aside $250,000, so we were trying to keep something there to hold back for, if we ran into a huge expense we didn't, didn't plan for, or we get down the road and our funding gets really tight. So, as you can see, that's building, that 2021 was our first year of that, so 2022 adds 500,000, and we were able to continue to set that aside. So we'll continue building that as well for, down the road, for future projects or any big, big things that happened that we didn't budget for in a given year, or that we missed. The second page is a comparison, it looks a lot like the first page, you'll see on your, at the top, it has a little five-year permanent improvement plan, and this is the funding that we have that you saw on the first page that we're budgeting versus what our five-year, what our five-year, I'm sorry, our 20-year capital plan that we presented, we, first one was in 2013, and we've updated it twice since, most recently in 2019. So what I've done there at the bottom is I've broken out the projected costs that we're, we're planning to spend, and I added an extra year there in 2027, for the purposes of looking at this, and then the second line down at the bottom that's in blue is what we had, when we did our capital plan for the 20 years, what our expected expenses would be as the district aged, and our equipment, things started aging out, and we had to continue replacing. So you'll see down there at the bottom that as we continue to get further down, we're going to start getting into more of a deficit in those areas. The other part, the note up here that, that kind of pushes us towards that deficit, when we passed the PI and the bonds in 2020, we, we knew we weren't fully funding all of our PI needs, and we did a hybrid, and that was to fund them through the bond and through PI. So those bond numbers are at the top, where you see the school bus replacements, roof replacements, and mechanical replacements. Those are the three things that we'd set aside funding for five years on the bond side. So that will run out on the mechanical and the roofing in 2025. The busing is still on there in 2026 because we were able, through efficient bus routing, we didn't buy as many buses from the 2016 bond as we'd planned, so we had an extra, extra year of funding there that then pushed our bus funding out for an extra year. So we have buses funded through 2026, but the mechanical and the roofing stops in 2025. So as we move forward and start looking at future buildings, general fund, all of those things that we may approach in the next several years, planning for that, then we'll, these are other things to take note of. Any questions on all that? I know I went through fairly fast.
I just have a question.
Yes.
Did you have a question?
I have a comment, then you can.
Okay. For the existing high schools, the collaborative spaces.
Yes.
Where do you envision those going in? Are the principals determining where, or?
Yes, we're working with the principals to do that. Next year, the plan is to hit, or to do Liberty High School, and Mr. Starner has collaborated with the staff on, on what they would like to do. We've budgeted to do four spaces, and the, like, Liberty and Orange, they was, would be what used to be the computer labs in the center of the wings, which is the same location that we put the collaboration spaces in Berlin High School. So we've budgeted to do that there. And at Olin Tangi High School, I'm excited about this, that's, you know, the older ones, we start updating, working with Mr. Griffiths, we've, as you walk in, the athletic entrance is to the right, you go in the other set of doors, used to be the main entrance, there are two classrooms inside there that I think at one time, some of you maybe had your kids, your kindergartners went there. We're going to open up that space, when you walk in that door, it's going to open up the two classrooms, and we'll turn that into the collaboration space there. And Mr. Griffiths, we removed Locker Island two or three years ago now, and put a collaboration space up there, so this will then expand that for Olin Tangi High School, which doesn't have those natural areas like Liberty and Orange had to take down the walls. At Liberty and Orange, the way that building's designed, it's drywall on the inside of that, behind the lockers, that's one of the ways we save money, the lockers protect the walls, so we've done those with drywall, so that's actually stored, supported by structural steel, so when we take the drywall out, that'll open right up and right across, so it'll be a fairly easy renovation to do that.
Okay.
So I guess I have a comment and a question. So comment is, if I add up all the technology lines, it's encouraging to see we're investing more in technology than asphalt.
Yes.
To show where our priorities are. Second, turf replacement. We're getting at, at that point, we're, we're approaching turf replacement at kind of the three high schools, assume those are all going to be funded through existing resources, right, that we had set aside prior, so if you could spend a minute on that.
Yep, so the high schools are coming up on 10 years, they went in in 2013, so they're at pushing eight years. The, we had an eight-year warranty with hope that we'd get 10 to 12 years out of the turf. We did have the turf companies come in just this past summer and take a look at those, and, and we're going to, at this point, there's not any reason to think we won't get 10 years, I don't know that we'll get 12, but 10 years. So the turf replacement funds are ongoing, and that is a combination of, we'd had money from a Pepsi contract that, that we, we seeded those, the turf replacements with, and then we have the athletic departments put in a percentage of their tickets from the sales at the stadium that fund that, as well as any rentals that the district does for the stadium, then those funds get transferred in to the turf replacement funds. So we're, we don't have a full funding there for those replacements at this time, but we're moving along, and we're on pace to be there, or really close to it when we get to that 10-year mark.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Jeff? All right, thank you very much. Next presentation, we have Dr. Kristen Bordage, and she's going to speak to us about the literature in the high school English Language Arts classroom. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, good evening, everyone. This is a two-part presentation, the first part is about some of the organization of how teachers go about choosing literature to use in the high school classroom, and the second part is about our district-wide literature selection review process. So, the defining document that most teachers, all teachers adhere to in thinking about their curriculum are the Ohio Department of Ed Education, ODE, ELA standards. The standards are organized into broad categories, five of which are pertinent to middle and high schools. There is a category simply called reading literature, and there are 10 standards that define what it means to read literature in deeper and more significant ways through the different grade levels. There are 10 standards, or goal statements, within the reading literature category. So this is an example on the right side of the screen, this is standard two of the 10 standards in the reading literature category. It's a grades nine, 10 standard, and the goal for students in this case to be able to do is to analyze literary text development across a text from the beginning to the end. The A and the B items there are sub, sub-goals or sub-standards, and almost every standard at the high school level has subcategories or sub-goals to further define what students should know and be able to do. There's introductory content to the standards document, the standards document is about 70 pages long, and the introductory content further defines sort of the approach to the English Language Arts instruction, as well as guidance for all educators and administrators in thinking about ways in which we go about supporting students with meeting standards. So one of those pages is about the design elements of the standards document itself, and the, and the thinking and the framing of the standards. There's one in particular that I think results to this presentation on how students go about selecting the literature that they use, and it's simply a focus on results and not the means. And in quotations there, I've highlighted an item that I think is important, and that is, "Teachers are free to provide students with whatever tools and knowledge their professional judgment and experience identify as most helpful for meeting the goals set out in the standards." experience identify as most helpful for meeting the goals set out in the standards. So here we see an example of how the Ohio Department of Education goes about seeing this work of helping students meet the goals of, in this case, reading literature, but very broadly, all the goals that define a discipline. There's a second page in the introduction that I think is important, too, and that is titled "A Portrait of an ELA or English Language Arts Student." So here we see the state trying to describe for us when students meet the goals that are the standards. What does that look like? What does that sound like? What is that? What does that really mean? How should we interpret that? So here, I think, the quotation matters for this presentation in that, "Students evaluate other points of view critically and constructively through reading great classics and contemporary works of literature representative of a variety of periods, cultures, and worldviews. Students can vicariously inhabit worlds and have experiences much different from their own." So again, we see the state encouraging this idea that students, too, are engaged with this process of of reading a very wide range. So we have teachers who are free to provide students with the tools that will help them meet standards, and students, too, are encouraged to engage in a very broad, broad literature selection to support that idea of that quotation. So here's an example. There's the standard I showed you on the first screen. So students in the ninth and 10th grades are really working hard to interpret text in deeper ways. When we interpret text, we're making meaning of it. We can't find it on the page. We have to connect the dots. We have to make connections. We have to synthesize a lot of information, connect it to what we already know, and it's really hard. I'm a former English Language Arts teacher, and I know from firsthand experience that this this process here that's written in the standard takes many years to develop that that depth of understanding of that process of thinking through and interpretation of a piece of literature. So the teacher will sometimes begin with a standard. Sometimes they'll work toward the standard. But in this case, imagine a teacher has the standard in front of them. They know they're charged to help all their students meet this goal. So then the teacher will choose a piece of literature. This is "The Book Thief." It's written by Marcus Zuzak, has won many, many awards, has been very popular in middle and high school literature courses, English courses for over a decade. And so the teacher's now saying, okay, where in this text am I going to find excerpts that will help student draw out this theme through the style? And really, that's what the teacher's doing is interpreting that standard and saying, okay, I got to mark up this text. I got to postmark. I got to find all the places where I'm going to either discuss model thinking, have students practice this way of thinking of looking at details of a text to see how theme develops over time. So this is an example of a markup. A teacher would mark this up. This is what I would do when I was teaching eighth-grade language arts. I would mark up the text. I would find that place where I could help students draw out this idea of theme. So that's an example of a piece from the text, an excerpt of the text that would be relevant for helping students meet this standard or interpret text in that way. And then the the fourth piece is really the teacher piecing all of these parts together, the literature, the standard, the actual excerpts of the text that relate to, in this case, analyzing the details of the text to see theme over time, and would select from their professional knowledge, the pedagogy, or the methods that would help them get to that standard with their students. So this process is complex. It takes a lot of time. Teachers, when they're working with a piece of literature, will plan for weeks, honestly, because there's so much prep that goes into, again, mostly identifying those parts of the text that are relevant for meeting the standards. And a teacher's not meeting one standard with a piece of text. The teacher is meeting multiple standards with a piece of literature. So that's the other, the last piece. Together, they comprise what it means to not just select, but to select a piece of literature for that broader context of ensuring students are getting better, in this case, at reading literature. So in this next segment here, I'm going to characterize the district literature selection review process. First, I wanted to introduce you to our literature selection list. We have a list that's available on a web, Owen Tangi webpage. Our list has over 300 texts. They include the great classics. We saw that phrase in the Ohio Department of Ed standards. Contemporary classics, so those classics have been around less time, but they've been around enough to say, these are classics. And then a genre we simply refer to as contemporary literature. So this is really high-quality literature. It's gotten the attention of all those literary experts in the discipline that have read this text and said, you know, this is really very high-quality. In my opinion, our our literature list does comprise high-quality literature. In many cases, the texts have won lots of awards. Some other information to help you contextualize this list, there are three, actually, we added a fourth Ohio author this week. And I sampled 100 texts, and I was looking at publication dates. Of that sample, half were published before 2000 and half were published in 2000 or later. That just gives you an idea. I didn't look at all. There's 323 texts when I was working on this, and didn't look at all. But that just gives you a sense that, you know, we have a very broad publication record there with our literature. And then the oldest and then the newest, 1813 to 2020. So that's our list of literature. And and I'd like to note that when teachers select a piece of literature, I'm going to share with you the review process here on the next slide. But the list might, the teacher might have decided not to use a text that they put up one year. They might say another year. Oh, I might go in a different direction. So it's not to say all these 323 books are being read right now. So I just wanted to clarify that, that there's there's some some give and take to year to year, depending on the group of students and and the teacher teachers' process and and planning for those particular students. So here's our process. I mentioned the planning before with the book thief example. And then the process ends with the class, the classroom use and students reading the text. In the middle is a process of review. There are four main parts. The first part, I've already shared, the teacher chooses the text that's most appropriate for the students and the standards, thinking through those framing principles, that idea of helping students have a broader worldview as a result of experiencing the literature. And so there's a form that the teacher completes. The form is then reviewed by the department chair, building administrator, and a curriculum administrator here at central office. The form has several parts. The teacher has to describe the text, provide a summary, provide book reviews. Teacher also has to provide those standards, so really has to to justify how that particular piece of literature helps students meet those goals and reach those very hard standards to reach, especially at the high school level. There's also a section where teachers have to highlight objectionable content, and then there's some signature lines. So the form is a few pages long. The teacher completes it and then sets sets that form in motion with getting those signatures. So in step three, after it's reviewed and signed by those individuals there on the screen and that I mentioned, teachers communicate the literature titles and any objectionable content with families and students. This happens in a variety of ways. And for us right now in the district, we are reviewing this process. And I have learned from attending department meetings at the high schools, talking to a lot of English teachers here in the district, as well as getting input from department chairs and parents, that this is the piece, that that item number three, that is quite variable in the district. And it's a part of the process that we would like to standardize and improve to to ensure that families do have full knowledge of the objectionable content within the text. And then the fourth step there is families consider the the alternatives. I did forget to mention that. That's really important in step one, that alternative texts are identified. So once a teacher just selects that core text, there are all alternatives that are mentioned on the form, written on the form. And those alternatives are as what families can decide that their child should read. And for me, in my personal opinion, that's a really important part of this. We want families to have choice in the curriculum in this regard, the literature. And I believe there is objectionable content in the texts we read at the high school level. There's objectional content in the literature we read at the university level. So this is a part of literature. And so families having that choice is really important. And we're reviewing this. I have a committee now of several English teachers and three department chairs from across the district and a parent who is meeting and working to revise the form, as well as a cover page. What I think will help standardize our process is a set of directions or a cover page, a guidance document that will really create, that less variability is what we want, especially in that step three. There are a couple of board policies, so just drawing your attention to those that help define this process for us. Thank you.
Questions, Mindy?
I do have a couple of questions. And I haven't been in school for over three decades. So I have had the opportunity to go into some of our elementary schools, and I, we had two teachers that came and they co-taught, and I, they did this amazing approach to literacy and divided up. So I got to go in and see that in action. I have not been in the high school. And when I was in high school and when I was in college, you were assigned a book. There weren't alternates. The whole class was designed around the book that you were reading. So you had discussions about the themes, the characters, the plot. And we discussed it as a class. Sometimes we had groups. So if we have a multitude of books for students to choose from, how does class look now?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
With, like, and you said a teacher pulls out specific text. Is she having to do that for every one on the list and make it unique to each student? I mean, that could be 150 students for an English teacher.
Right. So that's a, that's a really good question. And it, the pedagogy or the method has shifted since when I was in school, around the same time period. And so a teacher will manage that in primarily using a particular model called Reading Workshop. A second model that's popular is is a book club model for high school students. So what that means is teachers will have four, let's say, four choices. They've, they've been reviewed with this literature selection review process. And then those four choices are meeting the same standards. So they've already been, you know, if you go back to that book thief example, they all sort of map on in ways that are pertinent to that particular standard or standards that the teacher has selected. So they're all good choices for helping students meet those goals. And then what the teacher will do is use a lot of discussion methods as the teaching method, because you can discuss multiple texts, especially in small groups. Sometimes a teacher will, you know, sit with the book thief group and sit with another group and while students are reading in in the classroom space. So this is a way to manage choice in a way that is consistent with the the work that they're trying to achieve with those standards as the driving force. Did I answer that well?
You did.
Okay.
I still.
Because I can take another run at it.
I might invite myself into a class because they're reading a book. But now, you came to us from a university, correct?
I, yes.
Okay. And so university-level English, I guess I never asked my daughter this either, does she get to choose? Or I would think you don't get to choose at the university level.
It varies. As a university professor, I always provided choice. I taught adolescent literature to future teachers, and my entire menu was a menu of book choices that was organized by genre. And so I think that that trend of choice has really creeped into our methods, both at the secondary and the post-secondary levels. That's not to say there's not a professor who has a single text, but overall, the notion of choice is prominent, especially in the the reading literature circles, knowing that students have, you know, particular interests or particular topics that are honestly sensitive. The reason I had included so much choice in my teaching was because literature tackles complex issues. That's one reason we 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 want to engage students with it is to, you know, have these different worldviews, as the ODE document stated. So choice at the higher ed level is important because they have a lot of interests and things they they know they want to stay away from and not read.
Thank you.
Do you have a question?
I do.
So the alternatives, do those go through the same process?
They do. And there's been some shift. This process, I dug into board records to help me understand the history of the process. And I could find a date of 2007. And that's when I think the process started, at least from my research. And so the idea is that the alternatives are reviewed. I think there's, there's been some variation over time in the practice, and that is one of the things we want to shore up, is that all the alternatives will have a review process associated with them. So that has been inconsistent, from what I've observed and from what I've dug into. But that will definitely be part of our cover page, our guidance document to teachers for this. There'll also probably be some associated meetings, some professional learning opportunities, so that we can really carry the message of what we hope this process to be really well for all the teachers, English teachers in the district.
Another one. So what is that, the permission slip or the notification for parents? Like, can you just describe what that looks like?
Sure. So I'm sorry, I don't have an image of it, but it's, it's a, just a traditional Word doc at this point. I'm hoping that we can make the form digital. That's one of my hopes out of this revision work. And so it's three pages. It's a Word doc, and there are the broad sections that I mentioned that teachers complete. So the description, the reviews, the standards that the the piece of literature is helping students work toward. The objectionable content, the alternative texts, and then the signatures. So the last one I reviewed, really just in the last couple of weeks, I've reviewed three pieces of literature. And each form with all of that completed was three to four pages long.
I have one more comment on that.
Go ahead.
So what, once the new process is finished, and hopefully it could be in a digital format, we've come a long way, would, would a portion of that be available so parents could click on it and get the summary? Because if you have to state explicit, you know, parts of it, wouldn't it be stated on there for us to share?
Yeah. So the objectional content section, when teachers complete this, this is another piece of the process that we hope to standardize. So I, so if you can imagine, objectionable content is a heading. Teachers are completing the objectionable content in different forms. Some teachers bullet, some teachers describe, some teachers provide page numbers to where that objectionable content is found. My hope is that we can get to that point where all teachers are completing that with details, specific examples, page number references, so that that content is very transparent. Our website that lists all of the literature has the hyperlinks to this form. So the form is accessible right there on this particular webpage. That's simply called the Literature Selection Review, I believe.
Could a teacher assign an alternate book without having read it?
Uh, no, no, because the alternate text is aligned to standards. So a teacher would certainly make sure that that text is meeting that set of standards. So they've decided that within this particular set of standards, these texts work really well. There are assignments, however, where students have full choice, like, you know, I used to have, you know, read something in the mystery. Like, you know, I used to have, you know, read something in the mystery genre. And students will, in that case, be reading independently. And you could have 25 choices if you have 25 students. So that's another way that we get students reading. In that case, it might not be meeting a particular standard. There might not be that method of the book club. There might not be that organization and that intentionality. But our charge is to make sure students are reading, reading high-level texts.
Any other questions? Nope. Thank you. Next up, we have our superintendent's report. Mr. Rafe, what do you have for us tonight?
Oh, a whole bunch of good stuff. Mrs. Fiesel, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here, coming out to big nights as it's you and Mr. King's last board meeting. So it's a little bittersweet for us. But thank you to all the community members and staff members who are here in attendance. As always, want to start off with some great things happening around the district. Here we have a picture of the Tyler Run Elementary School celebrating their 20-year celebration. So we have our Tyler Run Tiger. So a lot of milestones, great achievement happening over at Tyler Run Elementary Stool. So congratulations to them. It's kind of great that they also got awarded a Blue Ribbon School of Excellence last year. So congratulations to Tyler Run. It's hard to believe.
I know. I was just thinking, I was on that redistricting committee.
He was on facilities for Tyler Run. He said, yes.
Yes, yeah. And I see Sue and Mark back there. We went, redistricting.
So this time of year, the holiday season certainly gets our community out doing all kinds of great things. So we had kids all over the district join the snowflake movement at Nationwide's Children's Hospital. So they've been making snowflakes to be displayed in the windows around the hospital for patients and their families. So that happened at numerous schools throughout our district. Johnny Cake Corners Elementary School did a Give Back Night, which was amazing. They'd had events that provided cards and supplies and food and blankets and books and on and on and on that benefited more than 1,670 people and 233 animals. So you see there a long list of different organizations that were a part of the Johnny Cake Corners Give Back Night. So thank you, Mr. Stern. I think Mr. Stern is here for all that's happening up at Johnny Cake. And every year, our district rallies around our Holiday Help Program. So our school social workers organized with the school counselors all throughout the district, collecting and donating gifts for over 150 of our Olentangie families. So about noon, this place, noon today, this place was still filled with all kinds of holiday help items that were picked up. And it really is just a wonderful demonstration of our one Olentangie spirit. So thanks to everyone who organized that event. Give you an update on where we are with COVID here. You know, obviously, December 9th, we've got six days of school left to the winter break. You know, we continue to monitor our cases in quarantines. We, you know, one day we get good news and then a week later, we get bad news. And we continue to ride this roller coaster that is our COVID cases in quarantines. I think it's important as we enter the next holiday season to notice what happens typically after we have holiday events. Halloween seemed to be a lot of gathering and same thing with Thanksgiving is the events trend up during holidays. Our cases here in the district, again, just following a quick snapshot of the two-week period after a particular holiday is when we typically see an uptick in cases and then, of course, quarantines. I met with our medical advisory team from Ohio State, and the medical community continues to be very, very concerned. This is a graph of the COVID impatience census, which is called Zone 2 in the state, which is region, there's eight regions in the state based on the hospital systems. We're part of Zone 2 that comprises three of the eight regions. So it's our central Ohio area and then all the way down to the Ohio River, kind of 23 west around to kind of like Marietta and up and around. So that bottom quadrant of the state. And the graph shows hospital bed usage throughout the state. So the medical community remains highly concerned about the availability of beds in our hospital systems. I think there's talk now in the hospital systems of, once again, limiting elective surgeries due to availability of beds. Here in Delaware County, you see here on the right, our county report card, we're still only passing one of the four indicators. The medical advisors that I met with would argue that the indicator two that we're currently passing is still in question because that one is an indicator about availability of beds. And when you examine the hospital system, there are beds available, but the problem they're having is they may have an entire floor of their hospital that doesn't have beds use available, or has beds available, but they don't have nurses and doctors to staff those floors. So while there are beds available, they're also seeing that their staffing challenges are immense. So again, the medical community is concerned. In Delaware County, obviously, now the vaccinations are available for ages five to 11. So we have here 35 and 37% of our five to 11-year-olds have started. We anticipate that that will continue. I would anticipate those people who are choosing to get their kids vaccinated, you know, there will be a large uptick in that over the break when kids are available out of school. 12- to 17-year-olds, you see obviously over 70% vaccinated, which is a great stat. Our county does have overall 76% have started and 71% of the total population completed vaccinations. So, you know, again, I'm not offering an opinion on vaccinations, but I do think according to my conversations with our medical experts, with medical experts and the health committees and the public health officials that are driving some of these decisions for us, in their opinion, vaccinations is the way out of it. So once we get to a higher percentage of people vaccinated, that's when the CDC will end the pandemic. So our medical experts, the people that I'm working with on this, and the Delaware Public Health District are still making, are giving the following recommendations, that because we continue, you know, as we're heading into the holiday season with a large number of indoor gatherings, they do expect a surge. So their recommendation is that we reassess all of our metrics on the 13th, which was when we come back to our next board meeting, which is why in my discussions with them, that they thought that was an agreeable date. At this time, the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatricians is still recommending that universal masking in schools takes place, which is because, and that's regardless of vaccination status. So just a matter of trying to control the spread and slow the transmission as best as we can. So, and since we are still failing three of those factors, the medical experts are still recommending that we stay the course. I understand the pandemic fatigue that we are all experiencing. I continue to say that. So I will, once we have our board meeting on the 13th, I will, at that point, have a clear decision on when we'll, really, the only mitigation strategy, the only mitigation strategy that we're left, that is, that we have to consider is whether or not we're going to continue to require masks at the K through 8 level or to go to the recommended mask strategy that some, that we actually started with. So I'll have a decision on that at the January 13th board meeting, whether or not we pull that back, that recommendation back on January 13th, or we look at where our cases are and predict that we would make that decision early, you know, obviously at the next January meeting. The board has adopted a policy on masking that requires masks K through 8. So we'll have to modify that policy as part of those recommendations. Some action items of note, I want to congratulate Mark Krieger and Teri Shoemaker, two of our longtime teachers, both been in the district over 20 years, who are retiring. And then I also, we have here an agreement with Robertson Construction to do the elementary media centers and the four playground updates that Jeff Gordon gave us a update on. And then we have six maintenance vehicles, which our maintenance team will be very, very, very happy to have at their disposal. Some important dates coming up, winter break here. We're at the, and it's hard to believe, we are at the end of first semester already. Halfway through the school year, I hate to say it, but second semester is slightly longer than first semester because we build in extra days for potential snow days and state testing. But we have our winter break coming up, which is, everybody obviously looks forward to and well-deserved, and our next Board of Education meeting, which we will be swearing in a couple new board members at that meeting. So, which brings me to the two of you who are stepping off the board. And, you know, in my time, I've been here 19 years, been, this is my seventh year as superintendent. Both of you were on the board that gave me this opportunity, and I couldn't be more proud to have worked with you. You know, you have both been very longtime volunteers and community, just servant leaders in our community. Mr. King, you know, we've known each other a long time. I met you, I think, the first time you were on the Facilities Committee. Met you when your son was a student, when I was the principal. Why won't you share that story in public?
You can stop there.
I always enjoyed watching you, the pride you took as a dad, watching your son in the drum line and in the school band and all the work you did to get that drum line started at Liberty High School and, you know, just as a parent in the district. And then the work you did as a construction expert, as an architect for our Facilities Committee. You've been a part of building 14 schools, two new bus compounds, the renovation of Olentangie High School, just so many, so many things over the years. So I just, you know, I've always appreciated you taking my calls when I just needed to talk to somebody about stuff that was going on. Couldn't have asked for a better colleague as a board member. So congratulations and thank you for your service. Mrs. Fiesel, if there is anybody in this county who truly loves Olentangie more, I'd like to meet them because you have poured your heart and soul into this district for so many things, which is why the Delaware County Foundation named you their Volunteer of the Year. You describe, I know we've talked about your leadership style and you've always described it as never being a passive participant. So, you know, you just have done so much from redistrictings and the Citizens Advisory Committee that we, that was part of the district when you first started here. Advocating for state funding, you, you know, the buildings that we've built, you know, with the additional state funding, as the five-year forecast that you guys have presented and voted on here recently is showing a healthy balance. You know, we're predicting maybe the longest span between levies in, you know, the last 30 years because of the work you've done to be a part of that school funding advocacy. You know, I've just enjoyed working with you so much. I've just enjoyed your passion for all that you do. I'm just so proud that so many staff members came out to support you and all types of staff members that just know and appreciate how much you care for them and their success, and most importantly, the success of every child who comes through our doors. So congratulations to both of you. And you get a well-deserved rest from all this.
Well, thank you.
Presenting you two awards. One signifying just simply your time and service as a board member. And then the plaque and the gavels that indicate your time that you served as board president. Julie, four terms, and Dave, two terms as board president. So thank you again. Thank you again. I'll throw down the challenges to Mr. Dabaco and Mr. Dabaco and Mr. Lester, who got big shoes to fill. And I know you're up for the challenge. So thank you.
Well, thank you. And we'll have our say at the end.
Okay.
We appreciate that. Thank you so much. Thanks for everyone who came tonight, too. Emily, you have your treasurer's report, please.
Good evening. I have just a few items, a little bit shorter presentation for you, but a few items to discuss. We have two legislative items in particular that we have some decisions on. So I want to start first with the Fair School Funding Play, Funding Plan, excuse me, and its implementation. We have now received word that ODE will be delaying that from December to January. So we do not have our updates to what that specifically looks like for Olentangie just yet. We will continue to monitor that and bring updates as soon as we have them available. And then also with House Bill 126, which is a bill that was changing the way that school boards can participate in boards of revision regarding tax valuations, that has been put on hold. I believe it came out of the Senate with support, but the House has put it on hold. For how long, we don't know, but we'll continue to provide updates as that moves through the legislative process. For action items this evening, we have our October monthly board financials. And so our monthly financials are running about where we thought they would be, about 49% of our projected general fund revenue has been posted. That is because we usually see two months' worth of collection at the beginning of the fiscal year, July and August, and then an additional segment of our homestead and rollback payments. We'll continue, again, as I said, to monitor the Fair School Funding Plan. Overall, for expenditures, we are running about 31% year-to-date, so slightly under. Some of those unders, or, excuse me, expenditures coming in under what we had anticipated are additional time and hours compared to last year, coming in under. And then purchase services down a little bit due to our college credit plus projections being over, a little over. So we will follow up on those as we continue throughout the year to make sure that we provide any significant updates and changes to those as we move forward. We do have amended appropriations and November board meeting minutes on the agenda for your approval this evening. Those are to meet our Ohio Revised Code standards. We have several donations, over $500, to recognize this evening. I do want to make an adjustment or an announcement on the $3,123.10 of miscellaneous supplies. Mr. Cattolo is the manager of Staples. And so Staples is actually the organization that is providing the materials. But Mr. Cattolo is the manager of the local Staples unit that actually gave us those donations. So I wanted to make that adjustment. We'll make sure to include that in our meeting minutes as we bring those forward for your approval and then following months. So again, we have $1,000 for the Shanahan Middle School Choir. We have $1,000 for Olentangie Preschool and just over $1,000 to Olentangie Schools. That includes things for choir, again, so school supplies and for supplemental dive coaching. We appreciate all of our donations that are made, not only in monetary donations, but in-kind donations, as Mr. Rafe pointed out in his presentation. We have a very giving community and we're very grateful for all of those. I wanted to point out an action item that is not on my presentation, but is a part of Mr. Rafe's section, just to point out that we are recommending Jennifer Glorioso to take the budgetary accountant position that Mr. Ratliff left open as he was promoted to Assistant Treasurer for our department. Mrs. Glorioso has been a member of our team since 2019. She has strong relationships with her fellow Treasury staff and building staff. She has amazing work ethic and computer skills. And we look forward to the continuation of her leadership and building her capacity her leadership and building her capacity around that. So, just wanted to point that out, that she is for our department, and wanted to recognize her for that. And also, a special thanks to Mrs. Fiesel and Mr. King. You guys have been incredible, incredible coaches as I've come forward as the CFO for the organization, whether that's in personal relationships or business advisory or legislative advisory information. You've been very supportive and helpful in this past five years, and I really appreciate that. We feel it as individuals that work with you every day, as well as the community feels it, so thank you so much for that. And finally, I just wanted to say happy holidays to the Olentangie community. We have a break right around the corner, and I think we'll all enjoy having some time with family and friends. Are there any questions I can answer for you?
Any questions?
No.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will let you get back to your seat before we proceed with public participation. Whenever you're ready. Okay. Thank you.
So, let me, if you don't mind, I'm going to read the public participation information for the community and for those in the audience. Public participation is the community's time to present any ideas, issues, or concerns to the Board of Education. Public participation is not a dialogue or a discussion. It is an opportunity to present any ideas or concerns to the Board in a public forum. The Board of Education will respectfully listen to the comments. Public participation will last for a maximum of thirty minutes. Each participant has a limit of three minutes to address the Board of Education. Participants will not be able to cede their three minutes to another person, and participants must state their full name and address when stepping to the podium. Public participation procedures are established by Board of Education Policy 0169.1. This policy was revised by the Board of Education on October 12, 2021. The policy is available in its entirety on the district website and also in the October 12 Meeting Minutes. So, we have pulled the, or taken the public participation slips from the bucket, as you have saw previously, so I'm going to call folks up as we have grouped them together in like discussion items. The first participant, may I have Eric Bulware, please? If you would, please state your name and address for the record, and I will start your three-minute timer.
Okay, I'm gonna have to speak relatively quickly here. Eric Bulware, 268 Olentangie Meadows Drive, Lewis Center. I first became aware of the district's practice of radical political activism around the spring of last year. I was a little late to the game, so I just ignorantly assumed it was not being implemented here. I was wrong. The more I engaged, the more I learned. You all knew exactly what was going on, and you were being dishonest about it. Despite the obvious and clear examples of this divisive, evil, biased activism and inaccurate ideology being crammed down our children's and teachers' throats, we have only been met with denial. I myself provided examples, and so have others. I don't need to repeat all the, all that has been presented detailing the use of Ibram Kendi's writings, use of activist trainers for teacher development, the Marxist group, BLM Incorporated being propagated, et cetera. All and more examples of things we have not, still not received an apology for and continue to be lied to about it. Now, call this whatever it wants, I don't care if you say this is critical race theory or whatever, call it whatever you want to, but whatever you call it, it's wrong, it's immoral, and it's biased activism, not neutral education. And you want to pretend this is somehow hard history, that's ridiculous. None of us want to cover up the truth, that's just your dishonest and inaccurate way of hiding your immoral agenda. In my professional life, I unfortunately have to deal with tragic events like domestic violence, sexual assaults, violent crime, et cetera. Apologies for the following graphic details, but I've seen brutal scenes of blood spattered in a room with clumps of hair scattered about because a husband threw his wife around by her hair, dealt with women being strangled by her husband and bitten in the face in front of their two-year-old child. I'll stop there, you get the point. Out of all the tragedy and evil I've dealt with, and specifically out of all the offenders that I've dealt with, you all are right up there at the top, and I do not say that lightly. The way in which you have used your authority to abuse children and push your own political activist agendas is inexcusable. I'm not going to go deep into the pornographic content being disseminated to kids in the district, but two parents have already read the obscene material recently, and I have no idea how you all did not drop to your knees, beg for forgiveness, and promise to commit to our kids, parents, and teachers that you would remedy these egregious errors. No public apology for that yet either. Even though I pulled my kids out of this indoctrinating district, I am still a taxpaying citizen. You're using our money to push your own racist, activist, and ideological viewpoints. Why can't you keep your own biased activism out of the schools? We send our kids to you so you can teach them skills like math reading and writing, not radical political indoctrination. The extent of your ideological stances should simply be, treat people with respect regardless of your differences. That's it. You shouldn't have activist slogans, recognizable logos, and visible representations inside the schools. And before you dismiss me and inaccurately label me with your own biased politicized label, notice I have not asked you to push my religion, my political ideology, or my viewpoints. I simply ask for you to not push yours or someone else's. I'm calling for neutrality, which is what a government school should do. You have demonstrated bias, not me. You have demonstrated activism, not me. You have demonstrated political agendas, not me. I'm asking for neutrality. You are government employees who have overstepped your boundaries. Children belong to their parents, not the school. You're welcome.
I'm sorry, you probably couldn't hear who I was asking for, could you? May I please have Mr. Charlie Grub, did I pronounce it correctly? I'm sorry?
It's Grub.
Grub, thank you. My apologies.
You're fine.
Please state your name and address for the record, and I'll start your three minutes.
Charlie Grub, 4673 Normandy Drive, Galena. I fought, I fought hard to get my son Carson in this district. My ex-wife and I, we didn't get along for the longest time. One thing we, we definitely agreed upon was Carson's education. It's lucky that we had Kristin here tonight to talk about the literature programs and how the books are selected. I heard the Board asking some questions, which I found really, really intriguing, because her answers were not what's happening today, and it are not what's happening today. My son attends Berkshire Middle School. His principal is Carla Baker. I've brought to her attention a book that is currently being read in his eighth-grade ELA class that did not go through the standards that Kristin had talked about. This book, if we even, if we set aside the book's social justice agenda, and we only focus on the curse words and inappropriate material, there's no way that anybody can say that this book is appropriate for children to read. The book in its own description says that it's targeted for eleven and twelve-grade classes, yet here it's being taught, and several inquiries to the school, several inquiries to the teacher, receive no response back to me. I reached out to Kristin's boss, who did give me a call back, let me know what the practice is, let me know what the loophole they're using is. So, they're giving, they're giving several different book selections to a kid, and none of these book selections, when you give a mass group of books, need to be through the standards that Kristin had talked about. So, this book with its curse words and inappropriate adult behaviors is right now being read in an eighth-grade F-bombs, drinking underage sexual behaviors, right now. I send my kids to school thinking that the school is protecting them, and it's clear that it is not happening. It's, it's beyond frustrating that I have to police what my child is reading in school, that the school is not doing it on my behalf. How did we get here? Is that my time?
Yes, sir.
How did we get here?
Thank you. If you would, please state your name and address for the record, and I will start your time.
Thank you. I'm Tracy McDowell, 2002 Roundwick Lane, Powell, Ohio. I'm here tonight to offer my heartfelt thanks to Julie Fiesel and Dave King for the many years of service that you each have contributed to our community and our school district. Julie, your expertise and passion for school funding and legislation, and Dave, your expertise in design and construction from your architecture background, you have each so generously shared with our district. You have fought for more school funding. You have saved us money on every building that we've built since the Facilities Committee began, and the financial impact of the two of you to bring more funding and reduce costs is too numerous for us to be able to quantify. Personally, I've been able to volunteer with both of you on various district committees. I've seen firsthand your gifts and talents that you've shared. I appreciate your professionalism, your insight, and your friendship. You both have served with the best of intentions, with integrity, and your legacy will live on in the tens of thousands of students that the two of you have positively impacted over your time on the Board. As a parent of three of those students, I thank you from the bottom of my heart.
May please have Terry Uline, please? Please state your name and address for the record, and I'll start your time.
Good evening. My name is Terry Uline. I reside at 284 Stone Quarry Drive, Delaware. Tonight, I'd like to give thanks to our outgoing board members as well, Dave King and Julie Fiesel. There's a quote by Gandhi that goes, quote, "The best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in the service to others." This quote best defines the long, in-depth service that both Dave King and Julie Fiesel have given this community. Julie Fiesel, prior to being on the Board, served on Board Redistricting Committee and Olentangie for Kids. Since taking her seat on the Board in 2006, she has been Board Liaison to Facilities Committee as well as School Funding Advocacy Committee. Thank you, Julie Fiesel, for being relentless and selfless in serving our community. Dave King, prior to being on the Board, was a founding member of our Facilities Committee, previously called Development Committee. Since elected to our school Board in 2010, he's been liaison to the Facilities and Finance Committees and Board Representative to Olentangie Education Foundation. Thank you, Dave, for our community, for serving our community in the passionate, compassionate, dedicated way that you have. Together, Dave and Julie have worked to educate our community and school funding issues. They both go above and beyond in their attendance of many school functions. Some of these include convocation of the staff each year, award banquets for our seniors, sporting events, plays, concerts. They greet and congratulate each of our seniors as they cross the stage for graduation. In addition, each year, our Board members honor our adult citizens with their Community Service Awards. Throughout their years of service on the Board, we have seen many changes in this district. One example is the growth. In comparison from 2006, we'll just take the 2006 when Julie became Board, to 2021, in 2006, Olentangie had two high schools, three middle schools, and ten elementary schools, for a total of eleven thousand nine hundred students. In 2021, Olentangie Local Schools has four high schools, five middle schools, sixteen elementary schools, for a total enrollment of twenty-two thousand two hundred and eight students. Dave King has been on the Board since 2010 and attended two hundred and forty Board Meetings. Julie Fiesel has been on the Board since 2006 and has attended three hundred and twenty Board Meetings. These, of course, are in addition to their committee meetings and all of the functions they attend. Dave and Julie have invested themselves, heart and soul, into this district and community. There are so many, very many people who have been privileged to meet and get to know them due to their immense involvement in this community. I'm not at all sure how any of my thanks could possibly touch the degree of sacrifice and hard work they have put into the Board position and involvement beyond in the community, but I do know their service and selflessness has touched thousands and has only been a positive impact in our ever-growing district and community, so thank you.
May please have Holly Hanson. Mrs. Hanson, please state your name and address for the record, and I will start the timer.
Sure. My name's Holly Hanson, 7661 Lydia Drive, Lewis Center. Can't say much more than Terry just said. She kind of said it all for us. I wanted to get up here and talk a lot about Dave and Julie and what they've done for the district. I think everyone knows that they're both givers. They both live and breathe Olentangie. I've known Julie for more than a decade, and Dave for more than a decade, and worked closely with them through the School Advocacy Committee, formerly known as the School Funding and Action Committee, when Tracy was the chair. We worked three or four levies together, been to the State House, Julie, to advocate for more funds, organized pep rallies, soul concessions together. I could go on and on. Dave, we're gonna miss your diligent work on the Facilities Committee and your ever-present smile on your, on, on your face, no matter what's going on in the boardroom. Your cool, calm demeanor and reasoning will be Miss Grayly. Julie, you've been the voice for the district on Facebook, and you've answered hundreds or maybe thousands of questions on your Facebook page alone. I'm not sure who's gonna take over that spot in the district, but it's a big, large void to fill. Your voice will be missed dearly there. We'll miss your connection with the State House and your ability to sort out legislation easier than anyone I know. I'm gonna spend the last minute of my time, because I'm up here and I can't keep my mouth shut, but this, I'm gonna speak a little bit to those in the community who are afraid of the teachers and the administrators selecting books and lessons that you deem inappropriate for your kids. Let me help you rest easier about this. You don't have to worry about the rogue teachers or the woke school board, or even a spineless Mark Rafe. These, these people are not the people you have to worry about, because you need to worry about somebody else. You need to worry about my child. You need to worry about his child. You need to worry about her child, and the kids on your kids' buses, and the kids on the soccer team, and the other kids at your kids' choir class, and your kids' roommates in college, and the other kids in their classes who do not look like your kids. You cannot control what my child or those kids say and how they influence your children, and it's a much more powerful influence than any school board member or superintendent has, and this makes me smile, and I hope you guys, too. Thank you.
May I please have Stacy Neff join us? If you would, please state your name and address for the record, and then I'll start your three minutes.
Stacy Neff, 376 Metta View Drive, Powell, and I think Penny already asked if we could speak together. We've decided we did prepare some words, but we're not gonna top what's already been said. I will say that of the thousand questions that, thousands of questions Mrs. Fiesel's answered, at least a hundred of those are from me. We, we just want to say thank you to Mr. King and Mrs. Fiesel for all they've done, and we, we collected from the community, there's a group of us, and we have some gifts if we can bring those up. So, thank you.
You're so brave. Thank you, thank you, thank you. 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 May I please have Mrs. Karen McGreevy? If you would, please state your name and address for the record and I'll start the timer.
I'm Karen McGreevy, 5389 Bayside Ridge Court, Galena, Ohio. So, why am I carrying a football? In 2013, I decided to run for school board in New York State. And I reached out to a good friend of mine who was superintendent of schools of our neighboring district. And he had three boys at the time, and we were raising our kids together and worshiping together and just trying to be parents together. And I said, "Okay, Tom, what's your advice before I decide to run for school board?" And he said two things. One, Karen, be prepared. Education is a political football. Number two, he said, "Always ask yourself, is this the best decision for the children?" And I am here today to tell you that I've got three kids. One is a freshman at Ohio State and was very upset about the Michigan game, but very happy to storm the court when we beat Duke. And he is a proud graduate of Olentangie Berlin High School. And I have two daughters at Olentangie Berlin now. And Mr. Spinner is very amazing about building a family there. We are a family, and we're there for one another to support one another. But at times in a family, whether it's your biological family, a school family, or a community family, or a church family, we have to be courageously confrontational with one another. We have to confront one another when we don't see things eye to eye. And sometimes we have different opinions. We may have different convictions. But there's one absolute that I think holds all of us together in this room, and that absolute is children. And that we are to do no harm. And so I just embolden you, I encourage you, I thank you for protecting children. And I give my best wishes to Kevin and Brandon as you become board members. And I have an idea that perhaps we look at ways that we can expand our student advocacy committee and have a team, school to school to school. Maybe it's a PTO representative from each school. Maybe it's a booster member from each sports club and performing arts club. It's taxpayers, it's alumni, it's stakeholders, and we join your efforts to advocate for children because they matter most. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have some business to do. The first under the board action item is we have to appoint a president pro tem for the January 13th school board meeting. And this person actually gets the meeting started because there won't be a president in the seat at that time. So, I need a nomination for president pro tem for the January 13th meeting.
I nominate Mindy Patrick.
Do we have any other nominations? A vote to close nominations? Do I have a motion? Do I have a second to close nominations?
Second.
Call the roll to close nominations?
Is that Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes. And now I need a vote on Mrs. Patrick to be the president pro tem. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Thank you and congratulations.
And now, our second board action item is to approve the collective bargaining agreement with the Olentangie Teachers Association for the period of July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2025.
I'll move. Second.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
And Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the treasure action items.
Yes, please, I'd like to present treasure action items A through D, please.
Do I have a motion to approve the treasure action items?
They're moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Superintendent action items?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to present superintendent action items A through F for approval.
Do I have a motion to approve superintendent actions A through F?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Patrick?
I didn't move.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
But yes.
Forgive me. Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now, this is where we usually end the meeting, but we moved, by my request, the board president's report to the end. And so, for the first part of my board president's report, I asked Dave King to say a few words. Or maybe a lot of words.
Now, a couple of you board, or you people sitting over at the desk, have made fun of me over the years about how emotional I get. So, I want you to remember, a couple of these people in the audience showed a little bit of emotion, right? So, I'm going to do my best here. I'm actually going to have to read because that'll help me. I'm grateful for the opportunity that I was presented to join the board. What's interesting is especially from this viewpoint, even though I've had a number of years involved in many different ways, I came onto the board with a pretty good understanding of what this is all about. That's a school district. But these years on the board and working with my peers has gained for me a really deep understanding, appreciation. When you understand this is not just a corporation. This is a hybrid. It's a business, but it's also educating our children. It deals with their pragmatic issues, seriously business issues, but it also deals with the abstract and education issues. It's a wonderful blend for which I'm grateful to have been a part of in some manner. You learn just extremely how sophisticated Olentangie Schools is. Its complexity, how many layers there are when you think about all the things that go on and the collaboration that occurs in our district. One of the reasons why it's as successful as it is. When you think about the size of our district geographically and all of the conditions for bus drivers, et cetera, and parents taking kids to schools with the highway systems, the railroads, et cetera, just dealing with that area, and of course, all the number of people who work in the district and all the buildings that come out of that, dealing and managing that situation. And of course, state funding and the advocacy for it that's been going on for years. And it finally looks like we're getting some good news out of that. And of course, the growth in our student population. And it continues to grow. So, I have some thank yous, three of them. And one of them is to my fellow board members. And I'm including almost all of previous board members that I've had the opportunity to work with. There's only been a couple of exceptions, and that's pretty amazing. But when you consider the fact that we come to this board with different backgrounds, different talents, but yet nobody has ever come, in my experience, with an agenda, a single agenda, like, "I'm going to do this. I'm going to get all the buses painted green. By God, it's going to happen tomorrow." I've never witnessed that, and I am so happy that we don't have that. With all these different backgrounds that come to play and different opinions, which is also very important, we always manage to find, over the years, collaborated effort and consensus of opinion, as you saw even this evening. This is not a rubber stamp. I guarantee you, this is not a rubber stamp. We have a lot of dialogue and a lot of conversation. And I'm very thankful for what we've achieved over those years. And Mr. Rafe and Mrs. Hatfield, for your leadership and being able to deal and manage with all the situations that we've had over these years, as I've just mentioned. And with all the remainder of the entire Olentangie family of staff, that they are cooperative, I've never, of course, there's differences in opinions, but the whole effort, just like with among our board and even a greater scale, the effort is extremely collaborative and cooperative. And I really appreciate what's come out of that as well. It's why we succeed. And finally, to the students, I thank you and their families for their support and encouragement. As the students have taken great advantage of so many opportunities made available in the education and growth that they have, whether it's band, music, choir, sports, athletic in general, educational opportunities, the plays, et cetera. It's just so many opportunities, and these children have always taken advantage of it. And we've all witnessed that with our children. And they step forward and they manage it. And that's, again, an extremely important reason why this district has been as successful as it is. So, just a closing comment. They didn't take too long.
No.
So, I'm hopeful. I know there's a lot of logistics involved. But one of my greatest things that I will miss is shaking a graduate's hand at graduation. My first year, when I went through that, all day, shaking all those hands and you witness the diversity and all those different personalities that walk through that stage. And some of them kind of shy, some of them are bold, some of them are quick, some of them are fast. And I'm thinking, you know, that's what all the people in this district deal with every day, all day. And I thought, great job. So, thank you, Olentangie.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. And I'm going to go off script here for a minute, and it's one of those things where I'm going to say something and ask for forgiveness later. But earlier today, the governor sent out a press release. If you would have read the press release, you would have thought, "That's a great press release by the governor." But if you read between the lines or know what we've been doing up here, because of legislative action that happened yesterday and today, Olentangie is going to be awarded some ESER money that we were not expecting. And it's the combined effort of a lot of work behind the scenes. And the money that this district is going to get is like the icing on the cake for me. And it's like, everything came together, you know, on this one day. And, you know, people say, "It's not about money. It's not about money." Everything we do, we have to say, "How does it impact the student? And how can we make it work?" Because we get so few dollars from the state. And, you know, my friends in the back here have been in those meetings when we've had to say, "If this doesn't pass, we have to cut this," you know? And for somebody who went through that, who had to live through that as a child, as a student, and not realizing what it meant when your school closed because you ran out of money and your mom had to teach the children in your neighborhood because your school closed because somebody voted no, this announcement is like, it's like a sign to me that, like, yep, my role here is done. And so, we kind of know what the amount of money is. I'm waiting for the spreadsheets, but it's going to be a really big deal. And so, you know, I can leave here, you know, as much as I enjoyed working with the people that I worked with to help get every levy passed, and boy, was it a job. And I met so many great people doing it, I am so glad to say that we're not going to have to do it for a while. And so, that just all came together, like, right before I left work. I got the press release and sent it on to Mr. Rafe. And so, I know we wanted to make a big splash about it, but I'm sorry if I took that thunder, but I just want you all to know that because of a lot of work, it...
I'm still trying to recover from the spineless comment.
So, just know that that is coming. And I already sent a text to Senator Brenner, and he gave me the thumbs up. So, we really appreciate the work and effort that everyone put into it. And it means a lot to me to be able to do this for the district. But anyway, my board president's report. So, thanks for the tissues whoever put this up here. This is my last board president's report in my last school board meeting. And like I've said many times before, public education is my passion. Since moving into this district in 1997, I have been involved in some way or another, whether it's on a committee or a booster club with Olentangie for Kids, you know, selling hot dogs at a concession stand, and now the school board. And it has been an honor, a true honor, to be involved in this school district. My passion comes from many of my family members who are involved in education. It started probably with my mom, who taught in Catholic school. And when she taught at Reedy High School, she was pregnant with me, and the nuns made her quit teaching when she started showing. And she had been married for two years, but, yeah, so she had to quit teaching. And so then, she started teaching in the public school district. And every summer, when we were little, she would tutor in the morning, and then we would go to the pool in the afternoon. And so, education was always around my house. And then there were other family members, like my sister, who teaches in Pickerington, and my daughter, who teaches in Nevada. I'm always talking to them about what's happening in their classrooms, what they're seeing, or constantly sharing information. My aunt and uncle Tim and Diane Wagner, who live in Colorado, who we are always talking education policy together, and they want me to run for another office. And I'm like, "No, Uncle Tim and Aunt Diane, I'm not doing that." But I've always appreciated their support. One of my education mentors is Sue Lally. And I've always treasured her and Mike Beware's input on education because they have shown me the positive actions that teachers can bring to their students. And they showed me what it's truly like to be invested in education. To my father-in-law, who is around a lot here, who has even loved being a substitute teacher in the district after teaching for over 30 years. He wishes he could get back in the district now, but he'll just come to basketball games. And to my husband, who I think lives at Olentangie High School, because he's there right now. Oh, is he back there?
Finally came to the school board.
Oh, my God. This is like the first one he's been to, which is another story. But I would be remiss if I didn't thank all of the people in this community that I've worked with over the years, and many of them are here tonight, which is a great surprise. And while some have moved away and we miss them, they've still stayed active in our district. And there are a lot of you that makes this district so great. And it takes a true team to bring the success that we have seen. It's not just because of one person. It's because of many, many, many people who have become true lifelong friends of mine. However, what matters to me most through this education process is the education that the students receive. Like Dave has said, whether they're here for 13 years or just one. So, I needed to ask the experts, those who have sat in the classroom, who they would like to thank, and those would be my daughters, Megan and Bridget, who we still call Guber. These are Olentangie graduates, and now they're lifelong learners with multiple advanced degrees between them. And they told me they wanted me to recognize some of their teachers that have had an impact on their lives. From Megan, Alexis Sergi, Heidi Stoll... From Megan, Alexis Sergi, Heidi Stoll, Hair Kremis, Sarah Zettler, Amy Miller, Nancy Freeze, Linda Schenk, and Mark Camilla, who, can you even believe that Megan is a science teacher? Bridget told me that this was a hard list for her because, and Bridget doesn't talk, and this is a lot for Bridget to say. This list is hard for me because there aren't many teachers that I didn't like. I loved almost all of my teachers from elementary to high school and all of the other staff members, from the lunch ladies to the custodians to the guidance counselors. But I have to say a special thank you to Scott Edgar, Brenda Doyle, Dan Horman, Sarah Butler, Rainey Edwards, Teresa Shawberry, Amy Miller, Christina Zeller, and retired teachers Mr. Yeomans and Coach Riley, who were my favorite history teachers. So, in honor of all of those teachers and staff members of our school district, I'm donating my 2021 school board salary to the Olentangie Education's Feesel Family Fund. And this was a fund that was established earlier this year by an anonymous donor. And the fund that it was established goes towards helping students with different learning needs. While I won't be sitting at this board table in the future, I will still be around volunteering on committees, working concession stands, and selling football tickets because my passion for supporting public education will continue. Thank you.
Julie and Dave, we have small, within-policy gifts for you to always remember us.
Okay.
Should we open them now? Do you mind if I say? No, you can say something. Well, Dave, thank you. You were the president when I first started on the board and you were patient with me and said, "No question is stupid." We learned from all of them and I probably asked a few that weren't the brightest, but thank you for your patience. You have always been calm and cool and someone that I wish I modeled more of my behavior with my children, the way that you do. Julie, I refer to her as Encyclopedia Olentangie. And I'm a little afraid to be a board member without you here because I don't know how to access all the information that you access so quickly. The last two days, we have been getting constant text messages about updates on legislation because she's there, she's following it. I don't read press releases. Thank you for doing that for us. Somebody else. I don't know what else to say, but thank you to both of you for your mentorship and professionalism.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I could, a couple minutes. I'll be brief. So, I didn't prepare any remarks because I just wanted to kind of go off the cuff. So, what comes to mind is where we started is not where we ended. When I first came on the board, we were in very different places. And over time, my respect and admiration for how you operate as a board member has grown and my respect for not just what we accomplish, but how we accomplish it is very important, right? We were able to disagree without being disagreeable.
Yes.
And we were able to get through issues as a board, not as individuals. And so for that, I think you've made Olentangie better, you've made me a better board member, and for that, I'll be forever grateful. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I can say, as I began this year, or not, was it last year?
Last year, I know.
Covid kicked in and when I was attending, didn't look anything like what was happening. But I am truly thankful that you both, and actually everyone, took me in, explained things, very patient with me. I'm just very grateful to have learned from you guys and to be able to carry it forward. Thank you.
Okay. My last option is to adjourn this meeting Sunday night. And that means no more action until the first of the year.
January.
We close out the meeting. So, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
What if we don't? They're still on.
I was thinking, we could go another hour.
Yeah, I think Dave made the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. And I'll second.
All right.
Yep. Call the roll, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Feesel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
I can drag this out.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes. Thank you.
All right. We're adjourned. Thank you.